I heard you moved out west. Rumors, gossip, and tabloid papers said it was for the best. I found out they were wrong a little later. While the sun on the rise.
All of the many, many things that have developed in our city that just makes us so special. And I would just encourage any citizen of Des Moines, please join one of the boards and really find out about what's, what are the other things that are going on in the city and the things that you can contribute to. And it just means so very much. And I also want to commend, we've got the best crew of city planners in the United States. They are just phenomenal. When I came on board, I guess it was Jim Grant sitting there for Micah City. And but between Mike and Kathy and Eric and Jason and Bert, all of these people just work so hard for our city. And I think we just have to commend them all the time on the hard work that they do. And for all of you who are serving as commissioners now, I commend you because I know you have jobs and you have families and you have other commitments and you take your time to come down and you're not paid for it, but there's something very, very rewarding about serving. And so I just thank you for that and I encourage people to get involved. And I just wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you. I go, I'd like to go ahead and bring, bring to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 15th, 2013.
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth, I'm sorry. Thank you. My, my contacts are failing. No. December 19th, 2013. I'd like to get the rules and procedures out of the way if we could. The Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission other than site plans and preliminary subdivision plots. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan or preliminary subdivision plot is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to city council. You'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on those council hearings. The applicant this evening will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and after motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and there are none right now, but we believe there will be some moved on. And will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or the member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The city of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834209 should special accommodations be required. Assistant listening devices are also available for the meetings in the council chambers. Planning and zoning commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the city of Des Moines website at You need to click the watch live link for those meetings. Kathy, do we have quorum? Quorum being present? Do we have, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Is there a motion? CJ, got it? All those, well, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. We have any abstentions?
One abstention.
You get it? Okay. And I understand we'd like to move some items on the consent portion. Is that one, two, and five?
I have a few questions on one.
You want to hold off on one then?
Yeah.
Okay. So two and five. I'm going to read those to everybody so that they know whether they're here or not on that. And if there's anybody who even has a question, let us know. Number two is a request from Dale Wright, DBA. Dale Wright's tire and auto service for review and approval of a site plan under design guideline, guidelines for vehicle display lots on property at 1825 Euclid Avenue to allow display area for rental trucks and trailers. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item? Seeing none. Number five is a request from CNS Properties 2 LC, represented by Chris Wiselick, to rezone property located at 4140 East 14th Street. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item? Seeing none. Does anybody have a question as to whether or not one of these items are yours? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion? Are we have got a motion? Any discussion? We're going to move those on to consent. Okay? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. It passes. We're moved to, is there a motion to approve the consent?
Sure.
He's gone on. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number one. Eric, you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to do a brief presentation. Staff and the applicant are in agreement on the decisions and recommendations at this point, so I'm just going to give a brief presentation on this and then if there's any questions, the applicant representative is here to me. Quickly, this is a project that's being proposed at the corner of Tuttle Street and south stretch 11th Street. Just ML King Parkway is just north of here. So this is the Grays Landing area, basically. The project is the nexus of Grays Landing. So we're talking about a project that's requiring the use of multiple family design guidelines. And so the commission's charge here this evening is to apply those design guidelines and as well as the design guidelines applicable to C3B districts. So both layers of design guidelines are in effect from the commission's review standpoint. In addition, the administrative review applied the downtown overlay district design guidelines as well. And those are all addressed individually in the staff report. The overall project itself involves the building of 142 residential units in the, in the area. So it's a significant size project. Right now, there's not a lot of development, but it's also just south of the planned unit development approved for a hotel that you just saw recently in the last couple of months. So you're probably somewhat familiar with this area. Staff, one of the, one of the main concerns that staff wanted to ensure through this process is that the construction of Tuttle Street would be as done as part of this and that this project wouldn't gain occupancy until that facility was in place. In addition to that, we wanted to ensure that we met the architectural standards that were in the overlay design guidelines, the C3B and multiple family design guidelines. And so the conditions that you see in the staff report are basically down to those level of details. Other things like rooftop mechanical equipment, the lighting fixtures, making sure that utility meters and transformers are concealed so, so that we have an overall high quality of project with a good aesthetic. So I've got pictures of the site if you need to see those. And if there's any questions at this point in time, I'll take those.
Any questions? Greg, do you want to question?
Yeah, I can put the actual plan that you're in the.
I'm not sure who answers it.
Okay. Go ahead and ask it. Eric, then we'll know.
Eric, the, right, the main question I have was I was curious how this project, its use and its form matches the previous master plan for, that was, I want to say previously approved, but that may or may not be the correct terminology. I've seen a couple of master plans for this area and I kind of like to know how this complies or doesn't comply or if it's something different. I think it's super important as we do those master plans that either we're following them or we're not for a good reason, that's fine. But so I'd like to know how this fits in the web.
I guess from staff standpoint, I think it's pretty much directly in line with that.
Do you have a copy of that by chance?
I don't know if I have the actual plan and.
I think in the future it'd be super important if you bring those.
Okay.
Because I know there's a lot of time spent on those master plans and I remember when the hotels came through, they were a variation. They didn't quite follow what was previously done, but there were some reasons why and everyone kind of bought off on that. So I just think it's real important that we do that.
Could you put up that aerial photo again?
Yes.
My understanding of that, right, is on this crosshatch site, there's the kind of L-shaped building proposed at the corner of Tuttle and Southwest 11th. And then maybe Jackie can, can speak to their future plans, but it's my understanding there would be a similar L-shaped building on Tuttle and Murphy. And then also buildings fronting towards Southwest 9th and Murphy also. So that, that's how the arrangement was to have those buildings out at the corners on the entire block bounded by Southwest 9th, Murphy, Southwest 11th, and Tuttle.
The other thing I remember in the master plan was there was a, there was a hierarchy of streets and there were some streets that were more important, more pedestrian, some that were more vehicular. I just would love to know how this fits into that master plan.
Yeah, and Southwest 11th is one of the more important streets as it connects up to ML King. So that's one of the ones that you were probably conceiving on that, from that standpoint. And then of course, east-west, the Tuttle, that's one of the concerns that we have is this, part of this project is to ensure this east-west connection of Tuttle, which is, will be the first major east-west street through that area, south of ML King. So it's important to get that connection so to tie it back into the existing fabric of the area south of ML King.
Anything else? Are you good?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
The applicant can probably address that.
That'd be great.
Eric, were you done? We're going to go ahead and put the applicant up here.
I'm here for questions.
Okay, great.
Jackie Nicholas with Sherman Associates, 233 Park Avenue South, Minneapolis. This is a deviation from the master plan, like you indicated, Greg, as well as the Holiday Inn Express. The master plan was different than it, you know, it wasn't a planned unit development plan. It was a master plan outlining what type of buildout was necessary to get the TIF return to pay off the Section 108 loan received from HUD. When the project was originally conceived, commercial was located north of Tuttle and south of ML King and fronted that entirety of ML King and then hooked down to north of Murphy. Since the recession, it's been obvious that we need rooftops to really jumpstart that development along ML King. And a great way to do that is add rooftops and the primary way to do that quickly is rental housing. If you remember, when this was originally conceived also, it was townhomes in the interior where we weren't even thinking about multifamily housing. So this switch to multifamily housing on this block obviously also supports what Hubble is doing south of this, but creates even more rooftops that we keep hearing from commercial developers that is necessary to build office and retail and the other things we envision north of Tuttle and south of ML King. And this whole process, as you can imagine, is a dance that isn't always well orchestrated because we will need to amend the urban development agreement, but at the same time, it's, it's super to go through these review processes and have actual projects before that happens because as you know, things shift and change over time. So we don't want to go back and change that master plan before we had projects in hand to say residential and have that residential project fail. So we're doing a little bit of catch-up in that, but we do feel that the residential will really strengthen the commercial where we need it the most, south of ML King.
I appreciate that. I think what I would ask of staff, if I can, is just that as we continue to move forward, this is this amazing piece of land in the heart of our city. And, and I've heard this a couple of times now and believe, I, I work in the world, you do, I understand, that we have these previous master plans that we're just not following. You know, five years ago, they, they might have made sense. I think there should be at a minimum some staff sort of planning work done at some sort of conceptual level that all of us can understand together and you can work with the developers as they come in so that we don't get 10 projects built and then we go, oh, now it's time to draw up an as-built master plan. You know, that isn't what we need. This is just this amazing piece of land down here. So I, I just think that's critical.
Also to reinforce what Eric said, Southwest 11th is continuing to be a primary corridor and we're working very hard to have, of course, a streetscape align as we move south from ML King through Tuttle to Murphy.
And those are the big.
And make sure that the sidewalks don't change. You know, we've all been to areas where that happened. You have a 12-foot sidewalk, six-foot sidewalk, 10-foot sidewalk, street trees, different lights. That's not what we're going to have. We're going to.
Those are the big moves I'm, I guess I'm alluding to is that uses are going to change based on the market conditions today, but there's a couple of big moves through the development that I think are super important. And Mike, you're nodding, so.
Well, yeah, I totally agree with you. We work with those plans on a daily basis and so we see how those were, we should have had that, that copy of that plan for you to, to review and it should be part of our presentations on these and we will do that in the future. I will point out, this has also been to the Urban Design Review Board who looks at those, those master plans and how these projects fit into that. And for example, the hotel project had already been to the Urban Design Review Board when it came to you. This project has been to the Urban Design Review Board.
This has been. We don't have final approval because our goal was to come to plan and zoning in the interim, get the little tweaks we needed done, which there have been a couple before we go back to Urban Design Review Board for final approval.
So this isn't the only, I guess, entity that will be reviewing it, but clearly we can do a better job of communicating in our presentations and in our reports, show you actually those plans and show the compliance, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question before you get away? Any other questions?
I do.
Well, we'll open in just a minute, sir. Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. All those in favor of the application, please come forward. In favor of the application? Seeing none, all those in opposition to the application, please come forward. Sir, do you know which one you are?
Oh, I'm in favor, but I have a question.
If you'd like to come forward. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Dave Moffett. 8350 EP True Parkway, number 2101, West Des Moines, 50266. I own property on Tuttle Street, just west of the proposed. On this layout, that curved piece there, is that abandoned railroad?
Yes, and it, this is owned, this is a parcel owned by the city at this point. I think portions of it are going to be transferred to the.
To the developer.
Developer on this site.
Okay.
I'd have to look into seeing what the ownership is on that.
That was recently abandoned and sold to the, or deed into the adjacent landowners.
Tuttle Street, I saw a drawing some time ago about Tuttle Street being a four-lane divided road. Is that now the plan?
No, I don't believe Tuttle's a four-lane divided roadway. It would continue further to the west in this plan, but I don't believe it's a four-lane divided roadway. It's a major utility corridor in this, in the plan. I do know that. Roger, maybe you can add.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Roger Brown, Assistant City Attorney. I've worked for the last eight years with the developer on this area. The, the early plans for the development of this area did show a four-lane divided boulevard for Tuttle Street to the west of Southwest 11th. Those same plans at that time contemplated a big box retail or something of that nature that would extend across this segment of Tuttle Street between Southwest 9th and Southwest 11th. Tuttle Street was not improved when we improved Southwest 11th because at that time, there still wasn't any confidence as to what was going to happen and to whether it would be needed. But I don't think that there has been any plans that showed that, that this segment between 9th and 11th of Tuttle being improved. But you are correct, to the west of here, it was shown as a potential major boulevard under some of the old plans. Unfortunately, as we're all aware, in 2008, a lot of those, a lot of plans that looked like good plans just have not been able to be moved forward.
This master plan you talk about, that's new to me. Where could I see this master plan?
You can come to our offices and we can provide you a copy with the, with the concept sketch that was done for, for the area as part of the urban renewal plan.
Good, thanks.
Yeah. If you want, Eric, if you could give him your card, meet with you on that.
Anyone else to speak in either in favor or in opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Staff's been moved? Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Wadi. That was a really good catch and, and I would like to see the master plans. There's got the south of court plan, the market district plan, and the building is happening in all these places. And I'd like to see the Ingersoll Grand District plans being followed. So great, great catch.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the staff's recommendation, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation again, Kathy. Thank you. It passes, by the way. Moving on to item number three is a request from Quick Trip DBA Tobacco Outlet Plus, represented by Donald Zeteloff? Zetlow? I messed it up, sorry. To rezone property located at 3301 East Euclid Avenue. The subject owner is Grays Lake Out Parcels LLC. Eric, you presenting on this one?
Yeah, just give me a moment. I'm going to write my information for this gentleman.
Okay. But everyone says they're not following it, so it's a waste of paper. That frustrates me.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is a request for the, the property you see here in the gold crosshatching and border. It's a very irregular shaped piece of property. This is Four Mile Creek that comes across the eastern edge. The blue line you see is the current floodway zoning boundary. In addition to that, and I do have another, I believe I have another one up here that would show the actual. Maybe I don't have that. One of the things that we don't have mapped to be able to provide a description is where the actual regulatory or proposed, I should say, proposed regulatory federal insurance rate map boundaries are for flood hazard areas. But what, what I can tell you is that they extend beyond what's currently the floodway zoning boundary, but do not affect the actual developed site portion of the existing built site here. So in this staff report, you will see that we are recommending in favor of a rezoning of this property. However, we want to limit it to that area, which is outside of the flood hazard area, similar to a recent rezoning we had on Grand Avenue at near southwest, or near South, 63rd Street, I'm sorry. So right now, basically, the, the building is, is well outside of the hazard area. There are maybe small portions of the parking that would be in the, what we call the flood plain or the flood fringe and not in the flood channel portion. But there are a good portion of the property that is in the flood channel that we would not, that we would actually want to rezone. So when you look at this too, there's a segment of this that's right now C1 that would, we were, we are actually recommending be rezoned to the floodway designation at the same time as we rezone the remainder to C2. And looking at this, the main purpose of this is for the property to continue to be used for a store which sells primarily tobacco products, beer and wine. That volume of revenue is over the 40% limitation that was adopted in the most recent text amendments related to businesses selling liquor. So they are looking at this deadline that's in the ordinance of the end of this calendar year and wanting to, seeking to comply. In order to do that, they have to get a conditional use permit. Well, they don't have any standing without changing the zoning to C2 to go for a conditional use permit. They, they would have to go for what's considered a liquor store. So when you look at that matrix in the staff report, under the applicable regulations, they would be, even though they don't sell alcoholic liquor, they are, would be considered a liquor store because they would exceed that volume of 40%. Given that, when you look at the matrix itself, it's divided into sale of alcoholic liquor and sale of beer and wine. The difference between the two with the same use is that if they're just selling beer and wine, they have a separation requirement of 150 feet from churches, parks, schools, and licensed daycare facilities. When it's sale of alcoholic liquor, they would have a 500-foot separation from the same. And so when we look at this particular location, there are not any issues with the separation for the 150 feet to allow sale of beer and wine. Therefore, we would be in favor of rezoning it, but because it does run into issues with separation of the 500 feet, we do not want to allow the sale of alcoholic liquor as part of this rezoning. So one of the conditions you will see in the recommendation is that we do not, we would want to prohibit the issuance of a Class E liquor license, which would allow that. So this would be a limited C2 rezoning in addition to what they're seeking in order to preserve that ability to, to maintain those separations of 500 feet. Right now, we have four conditions we're recommending on this. One of them I already spoke of. The first to speak to the desire to make sure we have an adequate description of the flood hazard area based on engineering. So we redefine what area of the C1 needs to be rezoned to that floodway designation and then also sever off the portion that would be rezoned to the limited C2. Then we would want to prohibit the, the Class E liquor license issuance. And then finally, we would also want to ensure protection of nearby residential areas by also precluding some uses that are typically higher impact uses to the residential areas, which are adult entertainment business, delayed deposit services, off-premise advertising signs, taverns, nightclubs, and vehicle display lots. So we are asking to prohibit those. So, we are asking to prohibit those uses as well.
Mike, move on.
Eric, and just to clarify, so that the proposed zoning condition prohibiting Class E liquor license being issued on the property, that would essentially preclude the applicant and any future owner from requesting a variance from the Board of Adjustment to separation distance or even the ability to get a liquor license, correct?
That is correct. So, they wouldn't have standing to even ask for that at the Board of Adjustment.
Any other questions?
I think I have one question. I'm trying to understand, sorry, I'm moving slow here, but why, they already have their license, correct? What's precluding this change? I don't understand.
They, they existed as the tobacco hut prior to the change in our code. And about three years ago, we made a change in the code that previously, the, the calculation was a fifty percent sales calculation of beer, wine, or liquor. And we changed the code to add tobacco into that calculation. So, immediately, their business plan was, by that change, was ultimately thrown up in the air because previously, they probably had about fifty percent of their sales in tobacco and fifty percent of their sales in, in beer, wine, or liquor. But when that code change came into play and we lumped tobacco into that calculation, that, that basically meant a hundred percent of their sales were beer, wine, tobacco, liquor, and so, that was the first thing. Then, on top of that, we lowered the percentage from fifty percent to forty percent. So, that even compounded their issue even greater. They were given approximately two and a half years to bring their use or their business plan into compliance with the forty percent sales requirement. Obviously, there are some of these, such as this tobacco hut, that it, it's just based on how they've always operated and how they originally were established, it, it would be very difficult for them ever to get down to that forty percent requirement. And that's, that's why they're in front of you tonight is to ask for the rezoning to C2 because the C2 district is the first district that allows, quote, "a liquor store" as a permitted use. And a liquor store allows up to one hundred percent sales in beer, wine, liquor, and tobacco. And then, but in this instance, they aren't proposing to sell liquor. It's just a change to allow them to have the hundred percent sales from beer, wine, and tobacco on this premise. We've not had any known issues with this property as far as violations or, or known sales. My understanding was from our review of their records.
Yeah, and again, this would still require review to the Board, in front of the Board of Adjustment for the issuance of a conditional use permit, so.
And they would also look at those histories. So, we know, we knew when the code was changed that over that two and a half period, two and a half year intervening period, we were going to run into situations like this at, at the end where there was a need to address. And I would anticipate you may see additional requests come before the commission in the next year or so as liquor licenses or beer and wine licenses come due for renewal and, and they fall into this, this category, so.
So, and continuing to educate myself, because they were in business prior to the zoning change, that doesn't give them any sort of previous, well, building code works differently than what I think you're describing.
Yes.
Please explain this to me. Look on page six of the staff report. I bolded the area.
Yeah, I'll let Roger address that question.
Like you were doing so well. I'm not disagreeing with anything that's been said, but you, you are correct. Generally, on zoning matters, there's the thought of grandfathering. It's a term that's not found in any official documents, but grandfathering is the idea that a, something that was, was legal, was conforming, can be continued even if there's a change in the rules. In this case, because it was generally believed that the change from sixty to, from fifty to sixty percent was an operational kind of requirement, the, the code was changed in a manner that required businesses to, to change their operations. Now, these tobacco shops kind of fall into a, does not, didn't, does not work so well for them because a hundred percent of their sales are now liquor, wine, beer, tobacco. So, they're, they can't really make, change their operation without fundamentally changing their business. But in, in this case, this zoning requirement, the, the normal idea of grandfathering was not allowed because for most businesses, it's viewed as a minor change of operation.
Thank you.
CJ.
I have a question. This request was sent out to three neighborhoods and no one responded to the meeting and nobody showed up for the meeting. I, I, I just questioned, were those received or did they give approval or there's just been nothing happening?
I think the card is coming around from Fairmont.
But did, no one showed up for the meeting?
Right. My understanding is that the meetings that they conducted, that they had no response.
Actually, there was no meeting. There was a meeting at the, the location itself, but there are, the neighborhoods in that area, I've talked to them. Neighborhoods in that area didn't have a meeting before this, before we'd have our meeting. So, there was, has not been a meeting of the neighborhoods. Yep.
So, question, Dan.
Yeah.
That, that person that the card is from, John Thomas, is he a representative of the Fairground neighborhood?
Fairmont.
Fairmont?
Yes.
Is, is he a, is he a representative of that neighborhood group?
He was the one that is listed as the contact person for that neighborhood association with the city.
But he didn't submit anything on behalf of the association, right?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Well, he, he submitted the, the response that you saw.
The card on his own behalf?
Uh, well, he gets a card. We send out a notice to him as a neighborhood contact person, so he's responding based on Fairmont Park.
So, is he responding on behalf of Fairmont Park then? Is that your understanding?
Yes, he's not an individual property owner that was notified within two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So, I, I can pass around the notice list of the individuals and contact people that were notified.
That'd be great.
I did list the names of the, in the staff report of the neighborhood contacts that were notified. And my, my reporting of the neighborhood meeting was based on a conversation with representative of the applicant. So, if, if you want to ask them further about how they invited people to their neighborhood meeting and, and where they conducted that, and you can ask them that question.
I just have a clarifying question. Does this zoning change allow them to keep selling the tobacco and it restricts the liquor and that's what allowed, would it allow them to keep doing what they're doing or no?
The, yes. The, the zoning change allows, was required to allow them to keep their current business model.
Okay.
If they weren't rezoned, they would still have the ability to sell tobacco. They wouldn't be able to sell beer and wine and tobacco unless they were able to keep it under forty percent, which with the current zoning, they could go to the Board of Adjustment under what we call the limited food or limited retail. So, if you look on the matrix at that and then sale of beer and wine in C1, it would still require the conditional use permit. So, it would be the second row down on page three, limited food and retail establishments. Then you go across to sale of beer and wine in C1 districts, and it says that there would be a conditional use permit required. They would be limited to forty percent sales of tobacco, beer, wine, and liquor products and then a hundred and fifty feet of separation. So, it's the same separation, it's the same conditional use permit requirement, but they, they would be limited to the forty percent sales, so.
Thank you.
CJ.
Does the applicant agree to these conditions that staff has recommended?
Um, as far as I know, they haven't up to this point. They would, they would need to prior to going to city councils.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? The applicant here, could you please come forward? Give us your name and address.
My name is John Rewards. I live at eleven oh six Woodring Drive, Waverly, Iowa, five oh six seven seven.
Very good. Okay. She's going to give you a sign-in sheet.
Okay.
And my name's Julie Alexander. I live at one thousand fourteenth Street Southeast in Altoona. I'm the store manager.
I'm the district leader for Tobacco Outlet Plus, which currently operates in the site that we're discussing. Understanding the changes that have taken place and the need for that, basically, our business drives, in this specific location, seventy-five percent of our sales drive from cigarette packs and carton sales. Less than ten percent of our sales drive from any alcoholic beverages, which would consist of beer and a very limited selection of wine. We do not carry any liquor. We will, we will not ever be bringing any liquor on the, to, to go under forty percent. The forty percent threshold is impossible for a business such as ours. It, it basically would require us to shut the doors or relocate to, to another facility. However, that's not an option for us at this time. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for our business specifically. I'm not, I'm not sure how familiar you are with our type of business. We're not what some might consider a head shop. We do not, we do not sell any drug-related items, drug paraphernalia, you know, no pornography. We're a family-owned business and company. Our parent company, QuickTrip Inc., is located in La Crosse, Wisconsin. We operate over four hundred stores in the tri-state area of Wisconsin, Minnesota, and Iowa. Forty-seven quick stars in Iowa, twenty-one tobacco outlets throughout the state, so.
Any questions?
I have, I have a question, please. The, the owner is QuickTrip Incorporated, doing business as Tobacco Outlet Plus.
Correct, yes.
When did QuickTrip acquire Tobacco Outlet?
Tobacco Outlet Plus was actually started, we've been in this market for approximately sixteen years.
And then this particular site has been there since when?
This site's been here for what, three years?
Four years in March.
Four years.
It was located at East Thirty-third, or at East Twenty-sixth in Euclid for twelve years prior to that.
So, this site was here before the, the new ordinance took effect?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Have you had an opportunity to look at the staff recommendations? Do you agree with them?
Correct, yes. We agree with your current recommendations, yes. Sorry, should I have specified that? Yes. For, yes, for this site that we're talking about currently, yes, we agree with your recommendations.
As I understand it, this is just going to maintain the status quo.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Be back up shortly.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Likewise, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ted's going to move staff. Any discussion? Seeing, oh, go ahead.
I don't really have a problem with the staff recommendation, but I'm going to abstain. Wanted to let you know that.
Okay. Got that, Kathy. Abstention. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. One opposition. And one abstention. Got them? CJ, and, okay. Moving on to item number four, once again from QuickTrip. To rezon property located at thirty-four oh nine Southwest Ninth Street. The subject property is owned by First Financial Group, L.C. Eric, you presenting on this one too, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Start this on the other end. Mr. Chair, we're, very similar scenario, the same operator that's the applicant in this case, different ownership of property. The location is having an effect as well on what the staff is recommending here. This is the Southwest Ninth Street corridor, just south of Calder, east side of Southwest Ninth. It's the gray, or the golden shaded or hatched parcel here. It's within a commercial center that has two tenant bays. Very, very similar operation. I think it's actually even maybe more square footage of area that they have than the other site. The difference, the main difference here from the staff perspective, there's kind of two things, but I want to mention the first one. The building in this location is a church and has been given, as, I mean, one of the things I did is verify the occupancy of the church, and they, they do have a certificate of zoning compliance as a place of worship with, as an assembly use. So, it, from that perspective alone, it doesn't meet the intent of the, the changes that the city council has made to the zoning ordinance with regard to separation. It's not, it's not outside of that one hundred and fifty feet. Secondarily here, we also need to look at the overall corridor in terms of going to C2. There's a couple of instances that I mentioned in the staff report that are within about a quarter mile either direction. However, this is pretty much a purely neighborhood retail corridor in the Southwest Ninth corridor in this area of, of the city. So, by changing this to C2, you bring about some more things that you wouldn't see in character-wise within the corridor. So, that's kind of a secondary basis as to why staff would not support this rezoning. That's pretty much the, the bottom line, the same, it's the same scenario in terms of what is triggering this. If they are granted the rezoning, they will require the same conditional use permit. They would have to also get a variance of the, that separation provision, which would require a different demonstration of criteria, which would, they would have to demonstrate that they don't have a other economic purpose of the property that's reasonable. So, from that standpoint, staff believes it doesn't make sense to request, or make a zoning change or recommend a zoning change contrary to the council's recent intent to have this separation. So, we're recommending denial. Are there any questions? I'll show you the consent map. We did get two cards and the inner ring is the two hundred feet. There were no cards and opposition received inside the two hundred feet, so nothing is triggering any provision for six, seven vote here. There was one in opposition received at the periphery of the two hundred and fifty feet that we notified. There's two neighborhood associate, or, I'm sorry, there's one neighborhood association across the street from this, the Grayslake Neighborhood Association. But, and, and that individual, I believe Evan Shaw, was given notice, and I did not get any response from him.
I have a question. Do you have the occupancy date for the tobacco hut and also for the church to know when each of those became?
I do have the certificate of occupancy for the church. I can't, I don't know what I would have to verify their, their occupancy as that entity for this property. But I can show you the certificate of occupancy for the church was granted on November sixth of two thousand and seven, thirty-five oh four.
Okay, and how long has the tobacco hut been operating there?
I, I can't tell you that, so you'll have to ask the, the applicant.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. The applicant, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Need my name and address again? Okay. John Rewards, eleven oh six Woodring Drive, Waverly, Iowa, five oh six seven seven. Iver Heer, eleven fourteen.
Iver Heer, eleven fourteen East McKinley Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, five zero-three one-five.
Can you sign in on that? In the case of, in the case of this one that's in question, we are opposed to the recommendations for this property. Again, percentage of sales, store is very similar to the one we discussed earlier, and that seventy-five percent of the sales drive from cigarette packs and cartons. The store that we're discussing now, their beer sales constitute about twelve percent of overall sales. I would just ask that the commission, based on those percentages, and again, understanding the changes that are involved in this, that we are definitely not a liquor store, even though we might be designated as one, based on those percentages of sales. We are bringing in, excuse me, additional items, grocery items, dairy, bread, produce. We're bringing in additional items to become more of what you would consider a convenience store. And I just, again, I just, we hope that you take that in consideration with your recommendation. Any questions in regards to this location? Oh, to answer your previous question, we've been at this location for ten years. We were actually, as previously mentioned, it is a two-bay building, two businesses. We were actually in one side of it when we established business in that area sixteen years ago. We left for approximately three years and then moved back to the other side of that current business. So, thirteen years out of the sixteen years we've been in that area, so...
Still the same question?
That answers.
Okay, that's what I thought. Any other questions?
I don't...
Greg.
Actually, for staff, real quick. Mike, has there been any police complaints or issues with this store?
I'll let Eric answer that.
We normally look at those things when we get the conditional use permit, so we did not do the, pull the police records on this at this point. So, from our perspective, the intent of the ordinance is to meet the separation. I should point out that if this zoning is not granted, they still have the remedy of asking for use variance also in front of the Board of Adjustment with another, again, there's that variance of separation and the variance of the use. That same burden of criteria would have to be shown. At that time, we would certainly look at the police calls and other things that are the factors that the Board of Adjustment looks at.
Any other? Greg.
Ask the applicant, you said that you were bringing in some other items in order to diversify your sales.
Correct.
The question I have is, do you see a time that you could comply with the ordinance, or is that just not possible?
At the forty percent range, that would not be possible, unfortunately.
Where I was going was, well, if you need, they need more time, maybe there's a way to offer it, but if that's not, if that's just too big of a hurdle, then that's too big a hurdle.
Yep.
Any other questions? CJ? No, you're good? Okay.
My question's for Mike, or for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, does this zoning change allow them then to go for the use variance, or which...
If they get this zoning change, that would change it so they could just ask for a conditional use permit. They would still need that separation.
Variance for the separation.
Variance in addition to that.
Because my comment on that is that the church came after they were there. So, the church obviously knew they were there when they decided to locate there. The ordinance changed later, but the church's knowledge of them being there didn't change. So, sometimes churches like to locate in neighborhoods, you know, because they want to reach a certain group of people. So, I guess I'd like to support their business being allowed to stay there and pursuing the use variance.
Yeah, I guess, as a staff person, I would sort of direct you to look at the role of the Planet Zoning Commission to recommended legislation. The Board of Adjustment's role would be to look at that situation of how they've operated and whether they deserve some type of relief to that standard that the zoning ordinance is established. So, that's my recommendation.
Just sharing an opinion.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
I just, the church sits next door to this. They may have filed for the occupancy permit, but they have been there for probably fifty years. Yeah. One thing I also want to mention, if the zoning were denied and they applied for a use variance, that also leaves the option available for the Board of Adjustment to attach a sunset to the use variance. It could give them a period of time, a length of time, rather than changing the zoning and allowing multiple other uses on the property in a corridor that's predominantly C-one. Typically, in the past, we've, when we've had these concerns about allowing a larger list of uses on what's generally a neighborhood, a commercial corridor, we've kind of urged you to pursue that denial, seek a use variance, see if we could, you know, have a sunset clause or something like that, or be a very limited number of additional commercial uses being allowed on the corridor. So, very similar here. Thank you.
Ted?
I have a question for staff. Mike, the only difference between this and the previous item is the church.
Two things different. One, the church within less than one-hundred-and-fifty feet of this property. Secondly, the entire corridor within a quarter mile in either direction is C-one zoned. So, those would be the two distinguishing.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
You got it?
Are we still in the, are we still on the public hearing, or...
We haven't gotten to the public hearing yet. We're still in the...
Oh, oh. I'll ask my question.
Okay. You have a question, John?
No, I have a comment, but I won't.
Okay, all right, that'd be great. Anything else? Go ahead, Nancy. We're going to open the public hearing. All those in support of the application, please come forward. In support of the application. Seeing none, those in opposition to the application, please come forward. Likewise, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion, Tim? Do you want to make the motion?
Move staff.
All right. Staff's been moved. We'll go to, it's John, and then we'll come over here to Will.
I know that the separation doesn't apply, but it does to me. One block from this place is Park Avenue School, grade school. To me, that counts even though it does not go within our separation circles there on the board. It's just, and then with the church across the street, it's just too important for me to ignore, and I can't support. I would move staff, or vote with staff.
Mr. Chair, I want to make sure it's understood, these separation, these distances are the notification distance. The separation that would have come into play is one-hundred-and-fifty feet, which would actually be less than this circle here. I didn't prepare a map that showed that separation, but the property that we're talking about is right here, and this, from this point to this point is one-hundred-and-two feet, so that's the...
Yeah, either way, it's too close to a school.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Will?
I have a question of staff. When the, this new aspect to the ordinance was established, at the time, we knew that there would be anomalies that would occur, and this is, this is one of those anomalies. My question is, over the years since the ordinance has been established, how many other exceptions have come, or anomalies have come to the commission for review?
I believe these are the first that have requested rezoning as their first option. We've had numerous cases that have gone to the Board of Adjustment for conditional use permits and variances to separation distances, but this is the first that's requested the change of zoning option.
So, in a way, this would set a precedent for perhaps others that might come before the commission.
You could see additional cases.
Any other discussion?
Just to offer kind of a comment to everyone, I find this one pretty troubling. Use aside, you know, just pretend it's a skateboard shop. The fact that you can have a business, and then through city council or whatever, through legislation, we then deem that you can no longer have that business there, you know, as a business owner, I find that troubling. Again, set aside for a moment their particular type of business, just the fact that you can have it one day, and then because some jurisdiction has decided they're going to change the rules, you now no longer can have your business. I find that very troubling. I'm not sure there's anything we can do about it here at this board level, but that doesn't seem right to me. I understand there's other vehicles that they can go down, but I just really wanted to make a point out of that.
Tim, do you have something?
I appreciate what you said, but I'm gonna, I also feel that with liquor and alcohol in a neighborhood setting, it does need to be regulated somehow, be it zoning, or changes in the laws, or things like that. However, I do agree with the premise of that. There, I believe, within a quarter mile, both directions of this are C-stores that conformed and brought in more groceries through the past few years. And with that being said, I thought there was opportunity for them to do this also, so I'm gonna, that's the only comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Seeing none. The motion is to move staff. Staff's recommendation is denial. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. You get them, Kathy? Greg and... My motion's denied.
Denied, or the zoning is denied.
The zoning's denied, right.
Motion approved.
The motion's approved, the zoning is denied. Right. Sorry, didn't make that clear enough.
That still would go to the council. Both of those would still go to the council for public hearing, so this is just a recommendation.
So, you guys understand that you're going to be up for the council hearing after this? Okay? There are recommendations, we'll go to council, and then you'll need to make a presentation there. Number six, request from Hubble Realty, represented by Steve Nieber, for the following actions regarding property at four-four-four Southwest Fifth Street. Review and approval of a site plan, brownstones on Fifth Street under design guidelines for multiple family dwellings to allow development of twenty, of twenty-eight two-story row dwellings, and review and approval of a preliminary plat, brownstones on Fifth Street, plat number, I guess plat one is what it is, to allow subdivision of property into twenty-eight parcels for row dwelling units contained within a common outlot parcel. Eric, you're presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
The property, and this is in the same vicinity as the previous project, the Nexus, but we don't have the master plan here, of course. This, I believe, is just east of the area that was probably in the master plan, but it's right at that fringe, so it ties into the same Tuttle Street as well. So, I apologize that we don't have that for your reference here tonight. This is the difference in, from the previous item of the Nexus, because it also involves the plating for separate ownership parcels as part of the request. This is the current layout that's proposed. It's a group, it's grouped into five different buildings. Each of the built, each of the buildings has no more than six units per building. I believe there's six in this, 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 and then this one has five, and then this one has five. So, and they, they've worked very closely with staff to get the design elements that we believe were necessary for this location. Also, the configuration of how the units are framing the street was important to us. I think initially, they came with a different configuration, and so they've, I do want to indicate that they've worked very closely with staff to come up with this plan that you see in front of you tonight. They didn't agree to all of our conditions, however, and the primary component, I believe, is with regard to the undergrounding of utilities, and so I will let the applicant speak to that. The other element they were uncertain of is the last recommendation in the staff report, which pertains to the final design drawings being reviewed and approved by the planning administrator. And that's based on the timing of getting the actual drawings that reflect the conditions and so forth that we believe we've come to agreement on. So, we want to make sure we have leverage to get them to follow those things, but we haven't actually got the document that reflects all of those comments, so...
Eric, I'm sorry, they don't want it to come back to the administrator for final review?
I think that there's, they have some question about that, and I'll let them speak to their concern about that.
Okay.
I'm not, maybe it's not an issue, but they've indicated to me that that was one of their concerns. So, we didn't recommend that this be put on the consent tonight because of those two elements that they want to discuss with you. So, I guess I would recommend focusing on those two elements unless you have other questions or concerns about the project itself.
Any questions?
There was no consent cards received because nobody, the way we do this with site plans is that the notifications are sent, but if they don't come to look at the site plan, we don't provide them with the card to make comment unless they've actually viewed.
So, you didn't have anybody come in?
We did not.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. The applicant, could please come forward, give us your name and address?
Steve Nieber with Hubble Realty Company, sixty-nine-hundred West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Chairman and commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. There are two items that I would like to discuss with the commission. I think it was item number two really was the one that I felt we needed to have some more discussion on, and as Eric said, item number three. The project is twenty-eight units, and as Eric said, we've worked hard with staff to come up with a layout which I think meets the zoning requirements and the desires of the city as far as framing the street. We initially came in with a layout very similar to what we'd done on Seventh Street, more of an interior layout, so we've moved the units and actually oriented them more toward the street. So, I think it's a win-win for everybody. The two things, the power that I want to point out, make sure everybody's understanding. Taking some photographs of the site, this is the north end of the site, so here's Tuttle, and there's three overhead power poles that are near the property. The large pole here with the transformer bank on the top is actually not on our property, though you could mistake it that it is. It's actually on the adjoining property next door. I can show you the survey that shows that, but, so really, what we're talking about are these two poles that we could eliminate by trying to go to an underground type of service, and the estimated cost to do that is about thirty-five thousand dollars. And I'm not, I guess, I'm not sure it's money well spent. This is not in a zone, an underground district the city designates for underground utilities for electric, so this is reaching beyond that zone that's already been created, which was a little bit of a surprise. It's not going to get rid of the poles, obviously, across the street. The major poles are across the street on Fifth, traveling down Southwest Fifth. There's also some, this is, this is a view to the west. There's a metal building there, and there's some wood poles with overhead lighting that lights that parking lot. Those are also not on our property. If you can see, there's one on the south end of the property along Murphy, a large power pole that is not on our property that we could not touch either. So, really, we're just talking about two poles. We're talking about thirty-five thousand dollars, which I don't think is money well spent. The entire neighborhood's still going to have overhead power. It's not in the overhead, it's not in the underground district within the city, so I would ask that that not be a condition of approval.
Steve, let me, I have got a question.
Yes.
You're pointing out the ones that aren't on the...
Okay.
Need to open the deal. You're pointing out the ones that aren't on the property, there won't be any requirement on something you can't do anyway, right?
My point is, I'm going to...
My point is, I'm gonna... If you spend $35,000, I'm going to get rid of these two poles right here.
Right.
Everything else is still there.
Okay. That's...
That was the point I was trying to make. Should've been clearer, I'm sorry.
That's... No, that's fine. I just wasn't tracking very well.
The point is, I don't think I'm going to have an impact on the neighborhood. You know, if I thought it was... It would be a nice thing to have for a project if I could really change the neighborhood with it, but I'm not going to do that. I'm going to spend a lot of money, and I just don't think it's going to have the net effect that everybody would hope. So that was the one point that I was trying to clarify, what was on our property and what wasn't, so really what impact we could have. Second item that I would like to talk to the commission about is basically just the mix of brick and siding. And here's what we had submitted and what the look of the buildings will be. These drawings were done by Sheffler and Associates. Brian Young is here from Sheffler and Associates to help us if we have any questions. But what we had done was taken an approach to try and a little bit of a different look from Seventh Street, even though the unit floor plan will be the same, try to vary the architecture, and alternate the brick and siding materials between units. This is what was submitted, and I think this is what staff is reacting to. So if this is not acceptable, I would like to kind of get a better handle on how much more hard surface are we looking for.
The side surfaces, the side facades, that was a question, right?
I took it as the front and the sides.
No, it says all side facades that front a street or drive shall be sited primarily with brick cement or lap siding or other materials, et cetera.
So maybe I...
I think our staff rec was trying to mirror probably Phase Three of your second and...
Is it just the sides?
Making sure that brick continues around the ends of the buildings going back on the sides of the buildings.
So if I'm understanding, so we would be talking about like this end, this end, this end, this end, this end, and this end.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. If that's... Then if that's the concern, I have no problem with doing like we did on Riverwalk and Capital View on the ends. I misunderstood the comment.
And we were just saying, carry that around the corners on those.
Yep.
That's the way it reads, Steve, although there's a typo that, you know, the school marm in me won't let go.
(laughing). The comment was, I must have misunderstood. I thought they were talking about the...
I'm not talking about you, school marm. I'm talking about some other... It should read all side facades that front the street.
Side being the key word, which I... So I have no problem with doing what we did at Riverwalk and Capital View on the sides and...
Dan.
I'm sorry, Greg.
I have a question for Steve. If at some point in the future that third pole, if the neighbor there took it down or agreed to take it down, would you, leaving these two poles there, at that time, would that preclude those from coming down? Would you do things that would make that more difficult? The question is, if that one would be gone, would you have a less of a problem getting rid of yours?
I don't believe anything we are going to do is going to make it any more difficult to remove them in the future, I think is to answer the question you're asking me.
And would you agree to take them down if that other neighbor took his down in the future?
Yeah. The one thing that, you know, the pole that sits that we're talking about, not on my property, that serves the property to the north, AP Lofts. You know, it's interesting, because these are public utilities that serve residents and businesses beyond my sight. So you have to ask yourself, why am I being burdened by putting those underground for utilities that are serving residents and businesses beyond the site?
And I agree. If you're not connecting up to them for what you're doing, then I really don't think you should be stuck with... We, as a... All of us need to take care of it, make it a policy, not just you. So I agree with you.
That raises a good question about master planning. I don't know if this was included in it, and if so, what kind of provisions were there for utilities?
This is really just a part of our downtown plan that was done, showing really continuation of Office Park and potentially additional residential uses as they come forward. So there hasn't been any real revised master planning for the entire area. Steve is correct, it is outside of our current downtown undergrounding district. We have had discussions about expanding that boundary. The site's currently vacant, so there aren't any power lines or buildings served by those poles out there, but I would assume those two poles in front of your property are where your power will be coming from?
From experience, I'd say yes. I don't have a proposal from Mid-American, but I think, I mean, safe to assume.
Anyway, so as far as, you know, the master planning for the area, our biggest thing was focusing on the urban relationship with these buildings. I know on a previous project, we had some concerns about the size of the units, or, you know, the buildings being interned and facing interior courtyard space and having the ends of the buildings. The last time, we tried to make some revisions to the building architecture later in the process that I know the commission approved. We did receive some concerns about that design maybe should have been more like this, so we took that to heart and pushed for all these buildings to front towards the adjoining public streets, and I want to thank Hubble for agreeing to do that. I think it is a good project, and I think long-term, it lends itself to, should the adjoining property ever become available, it's a logical extension of the same product and layout running those adjoining streets. So I'm not concerned about it being out of character with any planning for the area. I think it furthers the planning for this area and probably establishes a pattern for the area that we really want. So definitely puts parking behind the buildings rather than parking between the street and the buildings. Those would be great improvements in the area.
Greg, just something?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a motion.
Oh.
Not ready yet.
We're not here yet.
It's okay.
Is there... Steve, are you done?
I'm done.
Yep, okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
Yes.
You're good. Okay. Just want to make sure.
Nice.
I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure. I'm going to close the public hearing. Greg?
Yeah. I will offer a motion to move staff with the following two revisions. One, that we strike number three, and that number nine be revised to say add masonry brick to the end elevations of the buildings.
And you're striking three?
Yes.
Okay.
Greg, could I clarify that? You're asking about, what was your second component at revision to number nine?
I thought it was the nine.
You said nine, but you really... I said striking number...
You mean number two.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
We were all on the same page.
Yeah. So strike number three and then revise number two to say masonry brick on the end elevations or the ends of the buildings.
On all ends?
Yes.
Well, that's what the condition has now. That's what we're asking for, except for those interior...
The in...
Eric, could you put up the sketch again, please?
So basically, Steve didn't understand staff, so what you're saying here is the way that it should be anyway.
Right.
Okay. So really, we don't need to do anything...
Eric, just put up the site sketch.
We're good on two.
Not on these, not on these inside, the 20-foot separated ends, these ends here that face public streets.
Correct.
And driveways, yes.
Correct.
And that's what it already says.
Right.
Surely.
But what about Steve for number nine?
There was no change.
There wasn't a change for number nine.
You're okay with that? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So it'd be just striking condition number three?
Right. Any discussion? Steve?
Steve, a question.
Go ahead.
Light on. I have to turn the light on.
Whoops. My light is on. Steve, how many row house units at this price point does... Have you folks built in our downtown area in the last several years? And the reason I ask that is that they're starting to look a lot alike, and I love what you're doing to populate the city, but it's like Groundhog Day. See the same essential plan and facade, so I was curious as to how many you have, if you can comment on that. And I know you're working to a price point, and we've had that discussion with previous presentations, and I understand that, but if you could help us out there?
I don't recall the exact number. I think it was 20-plus up at Second and Grand of the two-story type row home that we had completed on a for-sale basis as a for-sale product. At 17th and Grand, the Artisan Row Project, which we were here a couple weeks ago, same type of floor plan, a little different elevation there, those are for sale, anticipate to be for sale. We had 20, what, 27 of them?
Seven, I think, yeah.
Seventh and Grant, or Seventh and... Southwest Seventh and Elm, if you will. We have 34, I want to say, and those are for rental, okay? And then there's this site, which also will probably be for rent, though we may sell them in the future, because they will be individual lots. So I understand your point.
Do you ever get concerned that it's just looking like cookie cutter? And I'm not trying to be offensive, but...
Yep.
We watched our suburbs around us grow up with massive similarity from block to block to block, and I wonder if you... Well, you must think about that.
We do, we do. Some of the things that we've tried to do is vary the roof lines, obviously, on the penthouse to the roof garden, to provide some different architecture. Tried to vary the brick patterns, the color patterns, the mixture of materials. But you're right, there is only so much you can do in a 20-foot frontage of each unit. So yeah, I'm... We're aware of it, and we're trying to vary it. Do we need to do it, take a different look maybe in the next set? Maybe.
I hope so. Thank you.
My thought on that is this, you don't want to turn it into your 2013 style.
No, we want it to be, you know, fairly traditional and look like a home. And not... We want it to be modern, but not cutting-edge contemporary.
Yeah. We want people to drive by and say, oh, that building was built in 2013. So, I mean...
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you for your patience.
Steve, thanks. Not picking on you, I just wanted to have that conversation. Thank you.
Are we taking the vote? Need to take it, please. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It's been moved. Greg? Opposed, same sign? Okay. Passes. We discussed previously the amendment to paragraph 11 of our bylaws, and for those, everybody should have one of these copies in front of them. We were talking about the introduction at the beginning of the meeting, and then we talked about the presiding officer or their designee so that we could maybe pass it around and people have another opportunity to maybe gear up for the chair. Is that my understanding, CJ? That was kind of your...
(inaudible).
It was to give people an opportunity to kind of step into the chair's position a little bit.
Well, not only that, I think this is a participation commission to kind of allow people to take some of the load off of the chair and to speak and become familiar with the rules and rights. That's mainly the reason they do it at council, and I just thought it'd be a good idea for the commission.
Okay. Is there any discussion with respect to it? I'm assuming you're moving it, right, CJ?
Yes.
Okay.
CJ, is this something that's done at council meeting now? I heard, I think, I thought that's what I heard you say.
No, 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 let's...
They take chairman's saying invocation, and, you know, they... There's participation rather than just one person always taking the lead.
The mayor does the opening.
Yes, but there's a different person does the invocation every meeting.
Well, I had a thought that I'd like to share. When whoever reads the rules establishes the ground rules for the discussion, and then ultimately, the chair is the one that has to handle any kind of infraction of the rules. And frankly, it seems to me that if someone reads the rules and then another one is asked to administer the rules, the authority of the person that's asked to administer the rules has had a little bit of his authority cut away from him because he's not the one who's read the rules. So my feeling is, if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Well, we're going to go ahead and bring it to a vote. Thank you, Will. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Oh, wait. All right, I'm sorry. In favor, please raise your right hand again. In favor. One, two, three, four, five, six. Got it? You got it? Opposed?
What do we have, even? Does that make any sense?
That fails. Eric? Not Eric. Mike? I've been going to you all night, buddy.
That's fine.
Just briefly, there is not a lunch with the city manager tomorrow, so there will not be one until after your meeting in January. There's only one meeting in January. It is the second Thursday, or I'm sorry, third Thursday of the month. So we try and not have a packet going out, but we between Christmas and New Year's in our office. So I appreciate you being willing to do that and approve that schedule. Secondly, I wanted to introduce you to our newest staff member in the Planning and Urban Design Division. Anna Minhaas has been with us for two weeks now. She comes to us from Iowa State University. She master's graduate, masters of community and regional planning from Iowa State, and we, in our division, combined two... We had two planning technicians who, one left the position to take a city administrator's position, and the other retired after 45 years. And so we combined those two positions, ultimately lost a body in our division, but were able to combine the funding for that, still save the city money, and be able to upgrade to an assistant planner position for the department, which allows us to have some different duties assigned, which are very critical to our division. And Anu has done a great job in her two weeks here. She's very, very talented, excellent at GIS, which is a skill that is very beneficial to our division, and just wanted to welcome you. You may see her at some of these meetings, but if you see a new face around here, just wanted to make sure, welcome her.
Welcome.
Final thing I just wanted to say is, I guess I'd forgotten that Shirley had been on the commission since October of 2001, and that means that, with the exception of about three months, Shirley's been here as long as I have. And so I just wanted to say, it's been a pleasure working with you. I didn't get to say that earlier, but thank you for your comments, and it has been a true pleasure working with you. You have been a wonderful commissioner, always have the city's best at heart in everything that you do, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, or adjourned? Or adjourned?